Okay, I'm gonna call the common council meeting to order and ask everyone to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Doug Saloga is excused tonight.
Baron?
Here.
Jackie Valdi?
Here.
Wayne Dean?
Here.
Matt Grimmer?
Here.
Kevin Maples?
Here.
Tim Iker?
Here.
Kent Atwell?
Present.
Tom Haffner?
Here.
Great, thanks very much. All right, City of Delphidelefield's citizens comments. Is there anyone that would like to make so- oh, Dan!
I'll speak. I heard no one was coming, so I thought I'd show up, say a few words.
Thank you. Oh, it goes where the flowers are. That's all right.
Are you ready?
Whatever it was.
Ready.
Excellent. I'm here to speak on item 3E, I believe it is, specifically about the trails, bike paths, sidewalks, whatever you want to call it. Bore you with a little history. My tenure with Public Works started back in 95, so I have about 24 years on. Why I bring that up is I remember my first meeting very well, and we talked about a trail. We talked about a trail from the New Gulf Road to downtown Delphidelefield, along Milwaukee Street, Maine. How to make that happen, and it went nowhere. On and off, we've had a number of times where we've suggested this, and it just gets shot down. In Nagawicke Road, and we remember that one, and we're gonna widen that. We had an older person who accused Public Works of not doing enough for trails, so I think that was probably the first year we put in for a citywide study. That got shot down. That was the same year as Nagawicke Road. I think in my tenure, this is the fourth time we've sought this. So it is, to me, is very important, I think to many others. And I don't, I want to take what Park and Rec has done and build on that. I respect what they've done, but it is a kind of a 2D plan, and I think the most important thing with what we're proposing at Public Works is to look at how that fits into the real world and the challenges we're gonna face, so that we can, and maybe we can add other areas, more connectivity to it, but to supplement what they've done. And the challenges that I see could be terrain, it could be real estate, or right-of-way versus easements, utility problems, trees, just things like that. So it's, you know, the purpose is there. The need, to me, is glaring at safety. We have a couple people on Public Works who use that part of Mission Road to jog, and it's really nasty. And I think wherever we've put these trails and our sidewalks, they've been used and welcomed, and we've gotten good feedback on them. So, safety is a big concern there. And I think when we look at cost, the $40,000, I guess, on a 6:1 vote, we eliminated the path at Mission Road at Public Works. That was estimated to be about $60,000. So I hope we're looking at a win-win here, where we can save $20,000 and still put forth a plan for the city. That's it, it's in your hands, and thanks for your time.
Thanks for coming.
You bet.
Great, thanks, Dan.
Merry Christmas.
I'll go home and watch the rest.
Seeing no more citizens in the audience, citizens' comments are now closed. Item number 2, consent agenda. Is there a motion for the consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention passes. Item 3, committee reports. Licenses? Any licenses?
Yeah, we do have one license on the agenda. It is a beer and wine license for St. Jonah Varks, Mardi Gras event in February.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions passes. Did you question on the motion?
Was that Matt seconded?
Matt, did you second?
I did.
You did. Okay, 3B, planning commission, Mr. Iker.
We have not had a meeting since our last common council meeting, but we do have one this Wednesday, early for the holidays, and it's a light agenda, but there's some fun stuff on there about just syncing up our ordinances with the new definitions of height restrictions and a couple other things. Please check the city website, and you'll see the agenda posted there. If you have any questions or comments, please come Wednesday night, and that's it.
Great, thank you. 3C, Lake Wilford Committee, Mr. Maples.
No meeting, no report.
Great. 3D, Park and Rec, Mr. Grimmer.
No meeting, no report.
Okay. 3E, Public Works Committee, Mr. Dean.
So as Dan was talking, what you had before us tonight is a resolution to amend the budget. What transpired at our Public Works meeting was discussion about eliminating a path that was considered for Mission Road and just going with the road improvements instead of the path. The path decreased the cost by about $60,000, and then the motion was made to ask for a resolution to amend the budget, since the thought process was that we're saving $60,000 to then take $40,000, as Dan was asking, for a comprehensive study and report on paths throughout the city to help guide us in the future. Anything you want to add to that, Tom?
No, I think that summarizes it well.
Okay. And in fair disclosure, I was the one vote against it. I tried to explain that my feeling was, first of all, one, I thought that that should be an item that comes from Park and Rec. Second, you know, when my wife goes to Target, she comes home and tells me how much she bought in the discount bin and tells me how much she saved, I said, "Show me what you saved. You spent money." So when it was put to us as that we're saving this, we're not saving this, we're spending $40,000 for what I believe the comm council had already discussed in our budget hearing and voted down. So I just didn't want to keep having another kick at the can through all this process and start laying more groundwork for other committees to come back and continued amendments to the budget. So that's just my two cents why I voted against it.
So we're gonna take that up later, right? So basically just your report, right?
No, it's on the agenda.
It's on the agenda under my report for somebody to make a motion.
Oh, it's actually, okay, to amend the budget, okay.
I just need to explain why I wouldn't be the one making the motion.
Gotcha.
For the resolution.
So why would we want to add back the comprehensive pedestrian bicycle accommodation plan for $40,000 when, at least from, I guess from my perspective, could we accomplish that through Park and Rec instead of, I mean, 40, am I reading that right?
Actually, I think the, if I can jump in there, if I was listening to Dan correctly, the reason he wanted it at Public Works was for them to look at things like easements, right-of-ways, things that they would have a better knowledge base in understanding, like, we can't really do a path there, as opposed to Park and Rec.
And I'm fine with that, but why the allocation of $40,000? Isn't that something they could do without that budget item?
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that. I was under the impression when we had our budget discussion and we made our decisions that Kent, you, and maybe we could do it cheaper. I know you're not involved.
Absolutely. I'm not in favor of spending $40,000. I'm a huge fan of separated paths, I'm all for the safety, I just don't think spending $40,000 to lay it out is spending our money well.
Not at this point in time. I completely get why it would be a good purview for Public Works.
And I understand that as well.
Yeah.
And I think if they get a good quality document from Park and Rec, and maybe we spend a, you know, a few hours with S E H to tune it up, I think it could be a very good working document they could use in the future at a significantly lower cost.
And I appreciate Public Works' insight and maybe taking the lead on that, I think it's wholly appropriate.
Let me have to answer your question. This was to hire an independent consultant with expertise in planning of trail systems. And then, like Jackie said, in addition to those things, also topography is a main thing that needs to be considered. You know, the Park and Rec plans are basically someone taking an arrow photograph and drawing a line on them. And maybe that works, maybe it doesn't. Also, a significant component of this scope would be substantial public involvement, including surveys and design surets.
Great.
Yeah, just from firsthand, a couple times, but most recently, the trail that Dan referenced with the $60,000, it's leaving the budget based on what I ran into in trying to negotiate with the neighbors and actually all the stakeholders in that quadrant of Mission Road for the trail that was proposed to deal with a very significant safety hazard. It was great concern over where's the end of this trail gonna connect to on the north end, and where's this trail gonna connect to on the south end. It doesn't match the Park and Rec plan, and why not? And what assurances would we have that we wouldn't? They agreed with the idea of the trail, but they were looking for something that added some sort of cohesiveness to a long-range vision with how it would connect and what kind of leverage we could hold over future developments to the north and to the south that would essentially anchor this. And a lot of the, I agree with that rationale. However, this is a recurring theme, like Dan mentioned, where we try to make something happen to leverage an existing, you know, an existing situation or a new road resurfacing or a proposed development, and it's in segments that aren't necessarily connected to anything other than a theoretical or conceptual plan that we have from Park and Rec. And when it turns out to looking at the 100-year-old hickory tree, or the four oaks, or whatever else, there's a roadblock that any kind of small opposition can just anchor and say, anchor to and say, "No, this is not going through my backyard or my front yard because it doesn't make sense." And very often, it doesn't. And so, year after year, we have these road resurfacings and new developments that either end up with abandoned segments or nothing that's cohesive. And I would see the budget item of the $40,000, I think that's a swag as far as the actual dollar amount, but I'd trust Public Works to leverage that as a cap to say, "Our expertise plus what kind of consultant do we want to put in place, and how do we actually want to spend this money?" They're a frugal group, and I think we'd come in much lower, but right now, we've got 60 grand in, we took out, we'd be proposing essentially to shave the budget by 20 grand to give them some headroom, and I bet we end up ahead. So I'm all in favor of it, because I've seen this replay itself over and over again, and I don't think we're ending up with a smart plan or in that result with a trail system in the end, at the end of it, we kind of end up with what seems okay at the time as opposed to an optimal long-range plan.
So...
I mean, it's another, it's very common that our capital budget is, comes in under what we spec, and we're already, we're trying, we're shaving 20 grand off, I bet we'll end up significantly lower, and this is some engineer, this is gonna be some field engineering work to go out there and look at trees and terrain and right-of-way.
So then, would you be in favor of striking a comprehensive path from 40,000 to a lesser dollar amount?
I wouldn't know what that is.
I wouldn't either. I know that 40,000 is a lot of money.
Those carry over very easily, you know.
So this dollar amount is a cost estimate from our city engineer based on what I shared with you as far as what the study would be envisioned to be. We didn't completely scope it out, so there would be further definition that could be brought to it, but this was the initial thought of our city engineers to this type of study, what it might cost. The other thing I'll say is, the purpose of a study like this is to bring clear definition of what's gonna happen in the future. We've been very inefficient at spending a lot of time on every single project that comes up, are we gonna put a path in, yes or no? We go through a whole process. So it would not make sense to do this unless this council trusts the process and buys in on we're gonna come up with a good plan, and it's gonna be something that barring some significant unforeseen change, this is what we intend to do in the future.
It has been my complaint, and I know you know that, Tom, for the number of years that I've been around, is that we haven't had an overarching plan about how we're gonna connect and exactly where, and knowing that there will be nuance to the plan.
Yeah, and people mentioned the Park and Rec plan. Again, those are lines on paper, but even worse than that, it's not something we follow. We've picked and chosen when we want to refer to it and when we want to use it.
So who's to say we follow this plan, then?
That, you know, as much as I want to support this, that's my question.
Right.
Right?
And the whims and the political breeze blow both ways, and we could have a path ready to go, but we get, you know, constituents, just like with the Highway C and, you know, the trees there, and...
It's really kind of a culture issue and a buy-in issue that's gotta start somewhere, and there are other municipalities that have policies in place that are difficult for residents to accept, but they stick to them. A lot of policies with regards to water main extensions and things like that that affect, you know, people's pocketbooks and things like that. I've seen policies go both ways, where you do planning and municipalities aren't very good at sticking to it and implementing it, and others where they stick firmly to it. And that's gotta be the mindset if we're gonna spend this kind of money on a plan.
Well, I do see the distinction between the Park and Rec plan and what you're talking about. And given the experience on our park, on our Public Works Committee, it probably is a good time to do this, because you've got people who've been around a long time before they retire.
Do you think, Jim, honestly, do you think we're gonna stick to it if we spend this money, and three years from now, the road comes up, the path is put in, are we gonna stick to it?
Well, I think, if nothing else, I'd like to pick the areas where it would be accepted as priorities.
Accepted by what percent of the people?
Well, whatever.
51.
No, well, it's always a waiting, like, the Highway C thing has made so much sense, and the remainder of Milwaukee Street, I don't know if it does, because of the nature of the traffic. You know, I think Highway C is a candidate to run all the way up another mile north because it connects to subdivisions. Do you put the paths in the subdivisions? I don't think so. I mean, if I read the minutes right, those neighbors up Mission Road actually said, "We'll use our road."
Yeah, no, they're, and they support, they support the trail. They had an issue with, and they said, "Use our, use our road," which is an odd way of doing it for the time being.
It makes sense for the area.
Yeah, but they, so their objection, they were actually looking for what this proposal is as justification to enable what was proposed.
But there are isolated areas like that that we may not connect to in our lifetime, but that still means you may put elements of it in. You drive around Waukesha and you say, or even Heartland, and see where sidewalks stop for 300 feet, and then they start again. At some point, they connect them, but, you know, I do think there is a much more professional approach. You know, 40,000 seems very high. I'm amazed that we're gonna do something for 10 grand in downtown. But I've also been around a long time, and I think these things are really valuable. People do, they become anchors, whether you agree with them or not, you have a lot of data. It's just like the master plan.
All right. Is there anybody gonna throw out a motion here?
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve it.
I think you gotta be more specific than that.
Approve the resolution as written, Jim?
As, as the Public Works Committee recommended.
So that's basically...
Getting rid of...
Give $20,000, reduce the capital budget by $20,000 and allocate $40,000 to a trail and path study.
That would be correct. No, we'll leave it at that. I have one more item for discussion if it's seconded.
I'll second it.
Okay, discussion.
My hope is that it shouldn't cost 40,000. It seems to me we should figure out ways to economize even in the RFP for the work.
We can certainly have that discussion at the Public Works Committee before seeking a proposal from a consultant.
Okay, is there any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
How many nays did we have? Three? And we had three yeses? Oh.
Finally. Finally, he gets to take a stand on the critical issue of the day.
And I'm a torn on this one, right? I mean, I really want it, I just don't want to spend the money. I don't want to spend the money, I'm gonna vote no. So if somebody would come in with a lower dollar amount, I would probably change my vote.
A lower down amount on the pedestrian plan?
Yeah, I just think 40 is way too much. I mean, I would think 20 would be enough.
Especially after you cut everything else.
I would think 20 would be enough, but...
I'll make a motion to amend Resolution 2019-14 to reduce the budget amount by $35,000, leaving $25,000 allocated toward a comprehensive trail plan.
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
Question. You, we lowered it from 40,000 to 35,000?
No, to 25,000.
25, sorry.
To 25,000.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Two no's, you got them?
No.
Dean and Maples.
Tim made the motion, Jim seconded. Okay, motion passes. Okay. We'll move on to 3F. Delhard Commission, Mr. Iker.
Delhard Commission had a meeting last week, which was our Christmas holiday meeting, and we honored Dick Landar for over 40 years of service and had great cake. And the big thing of note, which kind of flies under the radar, is with all the different interactions with municipalities and rivalries and contentious issues, one of the things that was really important about Delhard and Dick's work, along with the other commissioners at the time, was getting Delphidelefield and Heartland together to do this. I mean, the whole cooperative effort between municipalities is key to a lot of big thoughts and projects, and it saved the lake, and it's done a lot of good work, and we're very fiscally sound, moving infinitely into the future from current projections. So, thanks, Dick, and good luck.
Great, thank you. Okay, 3G Police Commission, Mr. Saloga's not here. If there was a meeting, I'll refer you to the minutes. 3H Library Board, Ms. Valdi.
Library met last week. During that time, our library director submitted her 2020 goals to the board. The library is currently in the hiring process for a new adult program and outreach librarian. Interviews will begin in the new year. There have been quite a number of very good applications. The cookie sale was another big success, and a lot of, it was the biggest one yet. And they also had, I want to thank St. Bruno's Parish Choir and the cadets from St. John's for providing music. Third item, our annual super special story time was tomorrow at 10:30 and Wednesday at 10:30 in the morning, both mornings, and special visitors, Santa and Missus Claus. Kids will have a chance to meet and greet, and the parents will have opportunity for pictures. So that's it.
Great, thank you. Okay, 3J Promotion and Tourism. Mr. Saloga, I don't believe they have a meeting, he's not here. 3K, oh, actually, did I miss I? Zoning Board of Appeals, Mr. Baron, did you have a meeting?
We did not.
Okay. 3K, the Country Fire and Rescue Commission, no meeting that I'm aware of. 3L, the Country Fire Board, Mr. Grimmer?
Uh-oh.
Uh-oh. We had a meeting.
We need motion.
It's just a motion sensor, somebody's gonna land.
There you go.
We had a meeting to give some budget highlights. Expenses continue to be in line with budget. Revenues for the first three quarters of the year were sluggish, we're roughly 3% back. However, there is hope. Our inner facilities, which is a big moneymaker for us, have increased, excuse me. The fire chief attributes that to their marketing campaign, and so they're hoping for a strong November, December, which they're hopeful for, and looks like that may be the case. They are working on developing an employee handbook, a standard operating procedure handbook, which they have not had, and looking to collect data in a new way, data relative to staffing, to referrals, where they come from, where they're going, so we can better see where our business is growing and where it might be not growing so much. Finally, two items. The Lake Country Fire and Rescue won the Oconomowoc Lake contract to the tune of $75,000, which will be a positive for the 2020 budget. And as some of you may have read, the city is in negotiations with the town for a potential merger, and those negotiation...
Fire departments.
Of fire departments? Yes. Thank you. Those negotiations are pretty much in their infancy, but I wanted to make the council aware of that.
Great, thank you. Tree Board?
No meeting, no report.
All right. 3, and deer management, Mr. Dean.
So far, we've got 196 hunters have registered. We have taken 80 deer, approximately 60 of those within the city, and 20 from the town. And I'll be giving a report to the town of Delphidelefield. And I'll be giving a report to the town of Delafield at their meeting Thursday night. The bow season for us goes until January 31st, and then we've contracted with the sharpshooters, just same ones we used last year, they'll start February 1st, and I've already taken them around on Friday to all the different locations. They'll probably actually take less time than they did last year, instead of using most of February. They'll probably only take a couple of weeks, because we've got more locations for them this year, so they can go quicker and work and get more deer for us. So hopefully, we'll be well hell of our goal of 150 this year total. I think we'll have no trouble reaching that.
Wait, do we have them under contract, or do we need to work on that still?
We, we had agreed with the same guys, Matt from Guaranteed Gone.
Okay.
So I don't know if they've sent you the invoice yet, or.
No, I'll get in touch with them to get a contract, right? Not an invoice, yeah.
Yeah, Matt was here on Friday, we went out and looked all around.
Okay.
They're still going to do it for the same price as last year.
Okay.
End of my report.
Great, thank you. Okay, 4, Unfinished Business, seeing none. On number 5, Mayor's Report. The only mayor's report I have is to congratulate Mary on her recent wedding last Friday.
Aww.
So she's now tied the knot.
Congratulations.
She has some celebratory flowers.
Nice.
Okay, number 9. Motion to reca, oh. Number 6.
Number 6.
Number 6. Oh, yeah, yeah. Number 6, New Business. 6A Discussion and Possible Action to Approve Execution of a Non-Binding Term Sheet with Wisconsin Electric Power Company for the City of Delafield's Participation in the SolarNow Solar PV System Hosting Pilot Program on the city's public works storage property at 218 North Cushing Road, formerly part of the Delahard property. Tom?
Yeah, this is an effort we've been working with We Energies for, throughout most of the year intermittently. Initially, we were looking at rooftops here at City Hall, and also at police and fire and public works. But We Energies has indicated that those rooftops individually are just too small to be cost-effective for them. Rooftops are more expensive than, than land installations. And the only real area that we've provided for them, for land, is our former Delahard property, the DPW property. And the positive thing is the area that we're installing these is really unusable space for future storage and things like that. We acquired that property largely for future flexibility with operations, so I don't feel like we are impacting that flexibility at all. There is a plan shown in your map, in your packet, about where exactly those panels would be installed. And so what we're approving right now with this term sheet is just an indication that we do want to move forward with this. It is non-binding at this point, but this would really cause We Energies to do more detailed design on our site, and then we would have our city attorney review the proposed lease agreement.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Great.
And comments would be, I think this is fairly long-term, is it like 30 years or something like that?
It is, proposes 30 years. I think they would be willing to do anything from 20 to 30 years if we have a preference.
And I, I would suggest that we definitely eyeball this for some sort of escalator in revenue based on cost of energy moving forward, because I don't know that that's something that's proposed. So if there's some way to, if we look into this.
You mean like an escalator?
Leverage, leverage, well, just like cost of living increase.
Yeah.
Or whatever, yeah. So like, something that doesn't freeze today's windfall into something 30 years from now that looks like a trivial amount of money.
It said, it says in the briefing that it's $4,794. So is that.
Yeah, so.
For 30 years.
I'd say something to deal with, deal with an escalator on energy costs, is what I'd suggest. I know we'll have time to do that negotiation when things get pushed forward, but that's just my thought.
So, Tim, we can certainly bring that up with We Energies, but I'm fairly certain that these rates are set by the Public Service Commission. It is something that they have jurisdiction over, and I don't believe We Energies has the authority to approve different amounts for different installations, but I will confirm that and see what possibility they do have.
Good to know. Good to know if that's, okay, interested. Anyway, still, still in favor.
Yep. Tom, the site here doesn't show the buildings that are currently there, right? This is an older photo?
There's a sketch, though, on 30.
Yeah. So this is on the top of the hill. The road is, as you come in the gates there, the road immediately goes up quite, quite steep bank, and there's a flat area up on the top. My point is, you basically won't see this from Cushing, because this is going to be much higher than Cushing Road, right?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
You will, you will see it from the interstate.
But not from Cushing, because of the way that height is up there.
Correct.
Okay, so it's at the top of that hill, not at the bottom?
Correct.
Awesome. Okay, that's good. Yeah, I don't think we're going to get too many complaints from citizens complaining about the site, or, because you don't, I don't think you'll see it at all up there.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, passes. Okay, 6B. Discussion and Possible Action Regarding the Supplement Letter of Agreement Authorizing S.E.H. Scope, Schedule, and Payment Conditions for Work in Calendar Year 2020 as a City Engineer. Tom?
Yeah, this is our annual agreement that we get from our city engineer. They identify the rate changes for key personnel. I thought that the rate changes were reasonable, and I would recommend approval.
Who, or how long has S.E.H. been our engineering firm?
So they've, they've changed names over time, but they've been the engineering firm since long before I started with the city in 2003.
Do we solicit other engineering firms?
We have not during, during that time.
Why?
I, I would say the number one reason is substantial institutional knowledge, and when you're working with a consultant like this, the rate you pay per hour is a lot less important than the number of hours it takes them to get something done. And I believe that that institutional knowledge allows them to get things done more efficiently.
But.
The other thing you do with, with RFPs is traditionally, you'll oftentimes see engineering firms slowball a first-year contract to get in the door, so it is also another concern.
But my, my question is, how do we know that these fees are consistent with other engineering firms without soliciting that information? Even if we decided to go with S.E.H.?
Mm-hmm.
Because right now, we're just saying, okay, 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 and we're not doing the checks and balances to see if we're getting a good quality product. I'm not saying we aren't. Just saying that, you know, if we don't have anybody to compare them to, how do we check, how do we have checks and balances? How do we compare?
I certainly see, I certainly see engineering rates in other contracts and whatnot. I am confident that these numbers are in the right range for what engineers charge, but you certainly could go out and do a RFP process if you'd like to. You know, it's something that the city has never done for city attorney, city planner, building inspection.
And actually, yeah, maybe we should. Maybe not right now. I think this is sort of like, maybe as we move forward in 2020, looking at 2021, we might want to at least discuss and consider, like, not just doing the same thing every year, because that's been the argument. And it does make a lot of sense, so I think, like, right now, I think it's a little late.
I, I would agree.
But I do, I do like your idea, Kevin.
Yeah, I just, you know, you want to keep everybody honest. And I'm not saying they aren't honest, but we have nothing to compare them to.
Yeah, it's not an unreasonable request to get some comps, and understanding that if we bid it out, we might get somebody who lowballs, but at least we could investigate what other similar-sized municipalities are paying.
Exactly. I mean, we spent a lot of time in our last meeting making a lot of painful cuts, and we're just checking this off and saying, okay, without even having any, anything to compare it to.
Right. Keep in mind that with this contract, we're not committed to S.E.H. throughout the whole year or anything like that. It's just saying, these are the rates they're going to charge us in 2020 for work they do for us.
Okay.
The time to make changes, the traditional time to make changes is in April. That's when we appoint our city engineer, our city planner, our city attorney and whatnot. I would suggest that if we want to look at it, there still is plenty of time to do it before then, if that's something the council would like to do. I would ask that if the council wants to get in a process like this, to not do it all in one year, but maybe one year we look at engineer, the next year we look at attorney, the next year we look at planner, some kind of schedule like that.
I don't think it, I don't think it would hurt us one bit, especially after the difficult work that we've had to do with budget, to just see what else is there, and we may then feel all the more confident.
And the realization from some of these, from planner, attorney, et cetera, might be that, oh, they're looking now, and so we need to come in competitive.
I'd prefer to discuss a negotiating, negotiation tactic in closed session, but I think these rates are, I bill out engineers all the time, and I think these are, these are fairly reasonable. But I think a good, something that would help us in, in April is sometime between now and then, if we could look at what our annual spend is on engineering services, if we could get that number rolled up for us. Essentially, what we're doing is offsetting a full-time employee and benefits, et cetera, instead of having a person or two, we're having access to a fairly substantial warehouse of engineering talent that they can call, call up on different issues. And so that would be a good starting point, I think, to look at for reality check, is what that total spend is and what it would cost to replace it with a full-time person or what other municipalities look like. But I think with that, maybe, maybe a good idea to bring this up as a, like, maybe a March closed session meeting to review that type of number.
Yeah, we can certainly provide that information. There'd be a lot of different buckets you'll see. A lot of what S.E.H. does is variable. They work on big projects for us. This year, they had the Gulf Road project. So I'll identify what we pay them for various projects, and separate that from what we pay them for just kind of their miscellaneous activities they do for us, and also separate out what they charge the city that we then pass through to private development that they've paid for.
And that's a pretty big number.
So, I will say, over time, just to answer one question, it was started with Welsh Hansen, and over the years, these firms have bought each other out. It was, they were the only engineering firm really based in, in Delafield, I can tell you that. Every time they've been bought out, there's always a concern, well, is it going to be good or what? I think it's always gotten better. You look at the website that they have right now, they have a lot of horses out there. If we have unique projects, I know that, so I've been really impressed with their work. I've also paid engineers through other municipalities and this one, and it seems like these guys are pretty reasonable, so.
They are. And there's other cost pressures.
But I do, I do think we should have a level set at some point, where we just make a record that we've looked around, if nothing else, interviewing other municipalities to see what they're paying. And that, and that's all I'm saying.
Right. I think that's fair.
And sometimes, we might, we might discuss all that in closed session, because maybe we've got a good deal and we don't want to tell them that. But I, you know, it's, it's, it, we owe it to the taxpayers to say we've done our due diligence on it. And I like the suggestion of picking a professional contract every year, that would rotate probably four years. I hate to quote the county, but they do it on all their stuff, and I think it's about every 10 years, but they have 10 things that.
Yeah. And, Tim, when you talk about the possibility.
Banking, legal, you know.
Yep. We talk about the possibility of seeing if it's worthwhile to hire an employee in-house instead. It's difficult to do, because they offer such a variety of services. They've got surveyors, craftsmen, engineers, and then the technology that they have is expensive and stuff that we don't have in-house, with the guards do CAD software, platters, and things like that.
Yeah, I, I, no, exactly, I think, but that's kind of the benchmark of what we're doing here. We're, we're replacing do-it-all, single expert with someone who's got lots of individual experts and resources. So, you know, I get, but that's, that's part of the reality check is, as far as what we're, you know, what are we paying for? No, I, I agree, there's, you can't replace S.E.H. with a single person. I mean, maybe just Mike, but.
So do you need a motion to accept these rates?
Before, I just need to make clarification why I need to recuse myself on this. Though I currently do not have a contract with S.E.H., I have in the past had contract to train their people and me in the future, so I am not going to participate in the discussion or the vote.
So I'll make a motion that we approve the proposed rates.
I'll second.
All right, is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, passes.
Obste.
Oh, abstain.
I abstain.
Got an abstain. Okay, 7, Reporter City Officials. Administrator?
Yeah, I've got on here that we do have a public informational meeting coming up this week, this Thursday, regarding the Nagaweka Road Separated Path Project. That'll be in this room from 5:30 to 7 o'clock, open house format. People free to come and go as they please during that time, to ask questions of city officials. And then the other thing I'll mention is, we did just recently submit grant applications for an MLS grant program for the potential medical campus at CN94. We submitted one grant ourselves for, through the city, for the relocation of Indian Springs Drive. And then the county was actually the primary sponsor for a separate application for the work that would need to be done on Highway C if that project comes to fruition. It is a grant program that pays up to 90%, but it is highly competitive.
We, we did that jointly.
Right. There's rumors that there's over 1,000 applications in for the funding, but we'll see. We'll see how that goes.
That the lowering of the hill, that, is that a, is that, is that a precondition for this project, that that, I mean, that, that Highway C hill be brought down?
It is.
If we're moving Indian Springs in?
Right, it is, yes, from a safety perspective, from a site distance perspective.
And the county dictates those terms.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions on that? Any other questions on that? Okay, that's all I have.
Sounds good. 7B Clerk?
Move to approve the voucher list.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes. Okay, C. Council Request for Future Agenda Items. Any future agenda items you'd like put on? Seeing none. We'll move on to 8. Motion to Convene in the Closed Session per Wisconsin Statute 19.851(c) Considering Employment, Promotion, Compensation, or Performance Evaluation Data of Any Public Employee Over Which The Government or Body Has Jurisdiction or Exercises Responsibility. More specifically, the City Administrator, Director of Public Works. Move.
Second.
Matt and Jim.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All you have to do is a little call.
Okay.
Jim Baron?
Aye.
Jackie Veldy?
Aye.
Wayne Dean?
Aye.
Matt Grimmer?
Aye.
Kevin Maples?
Aye.
Tim Iker?
Aye.
If you can turn off your mics, just to.
You don't get to pick.
Okay, we are reconvening. Thank you for those that were patient. We're going to make a motion to reconvene into open session. And the motion is being made by...
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
Rule call.
And we'll do a rule call vote. Doug Saloga is absent. Jim Barron?
Aye.
Jackie Valdi?
Aye.
Wayne Dean?
Aye.
Matt Grimmer?
Aye.
Kevin Maples?
Aye.
Tim Iker?
Aye.
Okay, all in favor?
We said aye.
We all said aye.
Yeah, all in favor.
The ruling is we're in favor.
Yes, yes. Okay, motion carried. Discussion and action regarding compensation for the City Administrator Director of Public Works.
I'll make a motion that he receive the same raises the general employees. It's one and a half percent for 2020.
Second.
Second.
I'll just comment, I appreciate the patience with our employees. All doing a great job bearing with us in these tough times.
Here, here.
Here, here.
Okay. So, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes. Okay, item number 11, correspondence. Notice of public hearing to conducted by Wisconsin Department Administration to receive information relating proposed cooperative plan between the Town of Lisbon and Village of Lanin. Public hearing to be held on Wednesday, December 18th from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Richard Young Memorial Fire Station, Lisbon Road, Puywalki, Wisconsin. And 11B, letter from the Wisconsin Department Administration recommending to the Village of Merton and Town of Lisbon to resubmit the proposed cooperative plan. Seeing no further business, the meeting is now adjourned at...
Oh, 8:52.
8:52.